Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this joint meeting of the Walpole Select Board and the Walpole Finance Committee. It is November 14th. It is after 6:30 the time of our -- posted time of our meeting, so I'm calling the meeting to order. FinCom, if you'd like to do likewise, that'd be great.
Yes, I'd like to call the meeting of November 14th to order.
Great, thanks Doug. And as we always do, let's start and recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, a couple of just quick housekeeping items, and I sort of went over this a little bit, but just for the people who've tuned in. Our purpose in coming together today is so that we can get a leg up on the budget process. So we thought it smart to get the FinCom and Select Board together as a joint team to sit down with some of the bigger budgets tonight, which are going to be DPW, Police, and Fire. We have School Committee, the School Department. In a couple of weeks, we'll do the same thing in that. So our thinking here is to just pull together as a group and start to have a dialogue with these bigger budgets, so we have a good sense for where the department heads are coming from. I'd like to hear where we are as of current year, so how are you progressing as current year spend? And I'd like to then get into your thoughts about where you're going in the next budget cycle. This allows us to then start to get our collective minds wrapped around the, you know, what we're -- we can expect as we go through the budget cycle, which we're about to get into in a big way. Somebody asked me earlier today, does this represent some kind of a change to our budget process? It does not. This is merely us coming together as a group so that we can get ahead of the process, but the process we run is the process that we're going to run. It's just like we've always done. No change at all. So this is really just an additional thing that we're doing. It is also intended to bring whoever might be new to the process up to speed and give some perspective on process and get to know some of the key, you know, department heads and also hear what those department heads have to say. So that's how -- that's what our objective is for today. The way we'll proceed is we'll start with DPW, then do Police, then do Fire. We've got a half hour allocated for each one. So I'm going to ask each one of the department heads to actually take us through a discussion. Where are they currently in terms of this year's spend against the budget? How do they see the budget process unfolding in the next fiscal year? So that we can begin to understand where they may be headed in terms of the overall process and what their vision may be. And then we'll have discussion. I think the best way to do that is just to go back and forth between the two boards so that everybody gets a chance. So we'll, you know, go Select Board, then FinCom, Select Board, then FinCom, and work our way through it that way, if that's acceptable to everybody. Doug, anything you would add?
No, I'd just like to thank you and thank, you know, Sheriff Crowley for giving us this opportunity. I haven't been in one of these joint meetings since 2018. They're very useful. I think especially because we had a lot of discussions this fall about the long-term planning and what might be capital is going to become operating. So I think this is a really important discussion.
Okay. And Jim, anything that you would add?
No, I think obviously we have Rick's up first, and as someone who's been around for a long time, I think he's dealt with a lot of the situations. And then moving on with Police, Rich, really his second time around developing a budget here, so I think he's a better understanding of how the whole process works. And obviously Tim's been around forever, right? So I think we've got three really good qual -- obviously qualified, but great department heads before you tonight. They're ready to answer any questions and take this -- we'll take the budgets, obviously, that are on for FY '23 and '24, so good to go.
Okay. Before we start, any questions from any of the attending members? Okay, then I think we're ready to go. So Rick, maybe we could --
Where are we going to go?
Well, let's go over there, because I think Denny's going to be here at some point. Also, we are microphone challenged here tonight. What do we -- we have three?
We have three.
We have three microphones, so we're going to have to do our best to make sure that the people who are listening at home can hear us. So I would just ask that, you know, as we're going through this, let's make sure we position ourselves near our mics so that people can hear. Okay. Rick, thanks for being here.
Thank you for having us.
Yeah.
Having me. First, it's kind of an unfair advantage here with the police chief, you know, home field advantage. I hope that doesn't weigh into the factor.
We'll have it down at the DPW garage next time.
Yeah. That'd be awesome. Wouldn't it? I'm Rick Mattson. For those of you that don't know me, I know most of you. Couple of new faces that aren't really familiar to me, but I've been the DPW Director for the last four years. Prior to that, I was the Water Superintendent for 30-plus years. So I've been around, I've seen a lot of things, a lot of good things, a lot of bad things. But I'm here tonight to give you an overview of the Public Works budget. The DPW is comprised of seven subdivisions. So it includes Administration, Engineering, Sewer and Water, Highway, Parks, Building Maintenance, Vehicle Maintenance, and Engineering. All of those divisions have distinct duties. The total staff that we have right now consists, I believe, of 64 full-time -- 63 full-time employees, one part-time clerical position, spread amongst all the divisions. The largest division in terms of staffing is the Sewer and Water Department. That's staffed at 13. The next biggest one would be Building Maintenance. The smallest is the Cemetery Division with two employees. And you'll see the budgets -- the largest budget is the Sewer budget, even though it's not as large in terms of employees. That budget is in excess of $5 million, and that's primarily as a result of the MWRA assessment. That is something that comes to us every year. Significant increases in terms of hundreds of thousands of dollars that's passed on to the ratepayers. The -- each of the divisions has their own respective superintendent. But the crux of the operation are the rank-and-file members, the 48 DPW members that are the so-called real doers. Those are the frontline people that you see out there patching the potholes, sweeping the streets, fixing the water mains, the hydrants, maintaining the common space around town, working on the playgrounds, and everything else that you see. There are a lot of things that they do that a lot of people don't see and a lot of people don't realize. The DPW lends support to many other divisions, Council on Aging, Police, Fire. So it's really a group effort that we pull together to do what we can for the community. In terms of resources and tools and equipment, the town has been very good to the Public Works Department over the past few years. The fleet has grown, the necessary equipment has grown, and that's testament to the fact that everybody works collaboratively, the Select Board, the Finance Committee, Town Administration. Jim's been very good in bringing our requests forward, and we have a lot of resources. Where we are lacking a little bit is in manpower and staffing. There are many more things that we could do if we had more staffing. We understand the competitive nature of staffing in competition with Police, Fire, and everybody else in town, and we get it. So we do what we can with what we have. And I think the top -- the department overall does an excellent job. You have very dedicated people, very dedicated employees. The department heads are very strong leaders, a lot of institutional knowledge that they pass on to their guys, and it's just a very good department, and we're striving every day to try to make it better. In terms of concerns for budget for the next year, our biggest concern is energy, our energy costs. Getting back to the water budget, 70% of that water budget is dedicated to the pumping and treatment of water. Significant energy costs, significant chemical costs. Our chemical costs have increased 119% over the last two years, with the biggest jump being this year. One of the -- there were three major chemicals that they used, and every single one of them went up significantly. Another concern we have is the road salt, the price of asphalt. Those things just continue to escalate to the point where it's a continuous moving target. So it's very difficult for us to budget for those types of things. We're working with our Energy, Dave Righerio, who's going to try to get us a sense of where we're going with our energy costs. There have been a lot of cost-saving measures that have put into place, most recently to Patrick's credit, the Omen's work that he did on the street lighting project. That was a huge benefit to the town, removing all those sodium lamps and putting in the LEDs, significant savings. Those are dollars that can be used in other budgets to supplement the rising costs of the other things that I just mentioned. Asphalt, like I said, it is another thing. The escalation costs on asphalt is incredible. We -- last year, our paving contract was, I believe, at $76 a tonne in place. This past year, it was $92 for the same exact product. And it's all driven by oils and aggregates. So those are the major concerns that I have. Any -- I'll start opening it up to questions.
Great, thanks Rick. We'll start with the Select Board. Any of the Select Board members have questions they'd like to ask? No, right now?
Not yet.
Alec? Good, okay. Doug, let's open it up to FinCom. Oh, I'm sorry, Denny.
Perfect.
I'm sorry. And Denny has joined us here. We had talked earlier, and so -- but it's good to see you here, Denny, and the way we had talked about doing this, just have just sort of a round robin across the two boards until the questions are exhausted.
Perfect. And I apologize for -- I organized this, and then I'm the one that shows up late, so my apologies for that.
Thank you to everyone.
So my question is about the staffing. And I know there's staffing shortages everywhere. Just curious, like, what compensation is like? Do you think it's an issue of competitive rates for compensation, or is it just that there's difficulty hiring people?
I think it's just a difficulty in hiring. I don't think the compensation is really an issue. We've taken some measures within the department. We've restructured to where we will cross-train employees and redeploy them to different departments. There are some instances where you can't do that. Case in point would be a water assistant technician, somebody that has to be licensed to treat the water. You can't just take another rank-and-file member and move them into that category. But as far as the vast majority of the other positions, we're able to mix and match within the departments. We have the right to do inter-divisional assignments. We've -- most recently, the last two hires that we had in Public Works were split positions. They're split between the Highway and Parks Departments. And that's kind of a benefit to us, where we have that flexibility of moving them based on our work.
I guess I have a couple of questions that relate to that. So first, which areas in particular are you most concerned about when it comes to staffing?
The biggest concern that I have, and I think the department heads share the same concern, would be in the Highway and Parks Departments. Parks Department is most particularly because of the South Walpole Athletic Complex. That's a vast area that needs to be maintained, and it really is a showpiece, and we need to dedicate a lot of resources to keep it in the pristine condition that it's in. We can't -- like I said, a lot of the little things that they do that people don't see will be in the middle of mowing one of the commons, and a call will come in for trash at Adams Farm. It's all over the place, and they're having an outing, so we need to send somebody up there and take care of that. Small, little things like that. One big thing that I don't think we're able to dedicate a lot of time to is the cutting of roadside rush for site distance issues. I'd like to be able to put somebody into that machine every day, but we, again, we just don't have the staffing to do that. Another concern with the Highway Department is everybody sees signs all around, snowplow contractors wanted. We just don't have a lot of staff, enough staffing to actually to man sometimes all of our trucks with illness and vacations and things of that sort. Sometimes we're really short there. We don't have, and this is not intended to be a sharp analogy, but we don't have the luxury of mutual aid assignments. We -- if it's snowing, we can't call somebody from another town to plow our streets. We just have to deal with what we have and the contractors that we've had. I believe we're up to 12 contractors now, and it's not so much the number of contractors that you have, but it's the number of pieces of equipment that they commit to the community. We were in competition with the town of Norwood and the town of Franklin. We were losing plow drivers to those two towns. The Select Board raised the rates. Thankfully, we attracted a couple of new ones this year and were able to retain the vast majority of the ones that we had in place. One of them left for Mansfield, and it's just, if you look at Mansfield's rates, they're incredible. There's no way we're going to compete with that. Nor do I want to, you know, get into a contest with competing with them. If they want to go to Mansfield, then go for it. But if we had, you know, just a couple of additional guys in Highway, we could, you know, we'd be beneficial. Those are the two biggest concerns, Parks and Highway.
Thanks. On the chemicals, especially the salt, because we're coming into the winter now, so thinking more about current year as opposed to the next budget cycle, do you anticipate any challenges financially, given increased costs of salt?
If we have in winter like we had last year, no, we'll be okay. I think we'll be okay. Just backtracking on the salt prices, they've increased 68% since the 2020, 2021 went to season. And I see no good reason why. There's certainly not a shortage of road salt. And you can blame all you want on fuel costs, but I understand they went up, but they didn't go up that much. So I think it's a price gouging thing, to be honest with you.
Yeah.
I really do, but we have to deal with it, as do, you know, all the other communities around us.
Okay. So just as we're getting into the winter months, obviously that's going to be a watch item for us, so just keep us posted if that starts to come together and see how, you know, what you might need in terms of additional funding there. Denny?
Mark, I have two questions. First, on the staffing, are you currently staffed for all the positions we budgeted?
Yes.
Okay. And if you could get a number of employees, how many would you be looking for?
For this fiscal year?
For the upcoming budget?
Upcoming budget? Two.
Two.
I like to start small.
My other question goes back to utility bills. Jim, maybe you can work with Rick, but when you do your budget, do you give us, like, an overall budget of heating and electrical that says, yeah, in 2022's fiscal year, we did X amount of gallons of heating fuel at a rate? And it was split over the 15 or 20 budgets, but this is the number, and we're anticipating a 20% increase in the rate, but not necessarily -- just to kind of see the components of it. But we say, because we're saying, you know, each school is between 12,000 and 20,000 for heating or heating fuel, but we really don't know what makes that up. So if there's a way of tracking down what we actually had for gallons used and an average rate, and we're saying that the rate's going to go up, same for the electrical, and that's something you can easily grab?
I don't know if it's necessarily going to be easy. Quite honestly, Building Maintenance maintains a lot of those budgets, but also some departments do their own fuel cost and everything. I'll do the best I can. As far as heating fuel, I'm not concerned about heating fuel because we, Dawn, over the years, we've weighed the buildings off heating oil. We, I think it's three or four. It's Fire Station, East Walpole Library, and one of the middle schools, right? I think it's the --
Johnson.
So it's only three or four buildings.
Is all the heat now being done by electric?
I guess.
Yes.
But I'll put something together as we're getting closer.
Members of the Select Board, any questions for Rick?
Yeah, just looking ahead a year and a half, what will the new middle school -- how will that impact you? In terms of building maintenance, in the next year and a half, I don't -- Because we'll be getting rid of the Byrd Middle School.
Right.
But Johnson will still be around, so, you know, I know when we look at the crystal ball, we'd like to have another use for Johnson right away, and we're still working on that, but I know there's a little bit of overlap there, so there's going to be more costs. Yeah, I wouldn't expect that there would be a significant cost associated with the upkeep of Johnson. I would imagine, once it's vacated, Dawn will just do the bare minimum to keep it heated, keep the lights on, so to speak, and not put a lot of maintenance into it until it's determined what the town is actually going to do with it. As far as the new middle school goes, I wouldn't expect to be a lot of maintenance costs for that being a new building. In terms of power, I guess it's fully electric, so.
It should be pretty efficient.
Yeah. I would hope that it should be pretty efficient.
Mark, thanks. Brian?
Rick, have you looked at, with the staffing needs and changes and places growing, the salt, the athletic fields, like you mentioned, have you looked at alternative staffing options? Subcontracting, some of the parks work. I know that's big involved, like, yes, golf courses are leasing out the maintenance.
We actually reduced our dependency on outside contractors in terms of fields. The Park Department used to hire a company to come in and fertilize, aerate and fertilize. They now do that in-house. Same thing with the hazard tree removal. They do a lot of that in-house now, since the acquisition of the bucket truck. I know there was a lot of concern, you know, looking at hundreds of $150,000 for a bucket truck, and how much is it going to be used? It's used quite frequently. Contract operations tend to be a bit more expensive for us, and prevailing wages is a factor, so we can certainly look at that, but.
I just think with the benefits and OPEB and all of those liabilities that come along with the town employing pension and all of that, you know, long-term, how's it looking?
Yeah, my only thing with the town employees is you have the benefit of having them on staff 52 weeks a year. So if things are, you know, not slow, but if the need is there to send them to another department, we can do that.
Okay. Alec?
So, Rick, I just had a question, obviously for asphalt and those prices going up. Where are we with the plans for paving? How are we doing with that in the sidewalks that are certain areas that we're looking to really address over the next few years? Are they in, like, accessibility of sidewalk, kind of keeping those sidewalks in the downtown area very much in great shape and accessible, and just like the overall thinking and process for that?
We would like to implement a sidewalk extension program, but first and foremost, we need to focus on the repair of the existing sidewalks. The last appropriation that we received at our meeting, we had committed to using $300,000 of it strictly for sidewalks. So that's an internal commitment that we've made as a Public Works Department to better the sidewalks. As to exactly what the location of those are, Ali, right now, I don't have that list, but there are plenty of them that need attention. One of them is in the area of the old Post-Rose School. If you look at that sidewalk from Pauline Lane all the way to the school, you'll see there are cracks in it, and there are different elevations, potential trip hazards. We had talked about maybe the safer routes at school, using some of that money for the sidewalks in and around the elementary school, but we haven't really pursued that as of yet. We do have a list, and I can get that to you.
And then, kind of secondary, too, are we have a lot of the more visible, you know, not necessarily walk signs, but those visible signs that are just really flashing to say that there's a pedestrian? Do we have more areas that we're targeting for those?
We just installed an additional four or six under the Complete Streets program. The, are you talking of the RFBs for the crossings or the flashing?
The ones that are the flash, that it doesn't stop us, you know, it doesn't have a light attached to it, but it just has a flash, just for a more high-visibility sidewalk.
Yeah.
You know, there's one on Washington Street, there's one, newer one now by Pulte, you know, just those high-visibility sidewalks.
Yes. Those, I don't know what the plans are in moving forward with the Complete Streets. There'll be many funds for the Complete Streets. If the consultant, when they're completed with their assessment, tell us, they basically tell us where they think they should go, and we follow through with them and install them at that point.
And then are we going to have to reduce the amount of roads that we're expected to pave with these high increase in costs?
If the costs continue to escalate, I would say yes. I'm hopeful it doesn't get to that. to that. I'm hopeful the things stabilize, but that remains to be seen.
One of the things that we should probably do is have a conversation with our legislative delegation about Chapter ninety, and, uh, make the points that you're making here around particularly asphalt, a lot of things too, but, but talk about asphalt in terms of the sixty-eight percent increase, uh, that you've seen in the last couple of years. And, uh, you know, that's, that's a reality that says we've basically reduced the, the, our ability to, you know, continue to maintain our streets significantly over the last couple of years, and, uh, see what we could be doing to increase that Chapter ninety funding. We can't be the only town that's having this problem.
We're not. It's, it's, it's interesting that we've added thirty-plus miles of roads since the mid-eighties, yet our Chapter ninety allocation remains pretty stagnant. It, it doesn't increase significantly yet. They've had it stuck at a hundred and twenty miles of road by the last X amount of years.
How many road miles, which, we had a hundred and fifty miles, huh?
We're, we're probably at a hundred, close to a hundred and thirty-plus.
Okay, piggyback on Ellie's comments about the sidewalks. So three hundred thousand that's for current year that you're...
Yes.
And is that an annual appropriation or is that?
Annual.
As available?
Oh, as appro, as available.
As it's available.
Well, it's an annual, for this year.
Yeah.
Okay, I got you. And whether it continues is, is up for discussion.
Well, depends on...
Discussion. Um, how, how, how much does that get you as far as distance? How many sidewalks do you have?
Uh, it, it depends. It depends. We have situations where we'll want to pave a road, and there are sidewalks both, both sides of the street. So our thought process was that on the planning board, rules and regulations now, a sidewalk, one side. So we had attempted in, in our neighborhood to do that. Remove one side and just replace the sidewalk on the other side, and it didn't end well.
It wasn't well received.
No, it wasn't not well received, so...
What are the kinds of materials that is asphalt or concrete or?
We try to replace in kind. So if the current sidewalk is, uh, is asphalt, we'll use asphalt. If it's concrete, we'll use concrete.
Is that more economical?
Concrete's a much better sidewalk. Durability less, basically, for it.
Okay.
Uh, asphalt, if you had asphalt, it just oxidizes and eventually it decays to a point where it crumbles and falls apart. But concrete is, I don't know the percentage, but it's significantly higher than, than asphalt.
Okay, got you. And then I have another question. Just on, on equipment, uh, do you have, uh, aging equipment, uh, list that you'd like to replace in the near future? What are some of your?
Under our five-year capital plan, there are a couple of larger trucks. As they age, when they get to the ten, twelve, fifteen-year, uh, stage, we put them in for replacement. I'm gonna guess probably over the next year or so, we'll be looking probably to replace two or three.
Oh, dump trucks or?
Dump trucks, larger dump trucks.
And do you have anything that you need to add to the fleet or that you'd like to add?
A lot of, we had some additions this year, uh, under the last, uh, the fall annual town meeting. Uh, the trucks are on order. We've added four to those things.
Okay.
We're, we're, in terms of additional trucks, we're in pretty good shape.
Okay. Excellent. I should turn that. Yeah?
Uh, Rick, when the one-eight project is completed, how will that impact the wall?
Uh, it's, again, it's gonna add to the maintenance costs. Uh, hopefully not for a few years thereafter because it's gonna be in good shape, much better shape than it's in right now. Um, it'll add to our efforts in terms of snow plowing and snow removal. We had anticipated that. We have taken that over. Uh, as you may recall, there was two, two fall town meetings ago, we had asked for a very large dump truck, swap load a ten-wheeler truck and additional ten-wheeler. Uh, that truck is currently in production. Two years out now, it's now in production, and, uh, that was the intended purpose of that vehicle. One of the main reasons was because of the one-eight project.
Good question, yeah. Question about the bathrooms at that point here. Uh, my understanding is that you're taking that over, building maintenance will take over the...
Correct.
Is that gonna be a significant impact?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't think so. It, uh, would be minimal, I would think. Uh, the, just, uh, it's, there's very limited heat in there. It's a radiant system that 'll only just keep the bare minimum heat, just to prevent things from freezing, so we can keep the bathrooms open air around. Uh, some storm water costs, but as far as maintenance on the building, I don't, I don't think it's a high-maintenance building. It's got a steel roof on it, which is very good. Uh, the exterior has got the ceramic board on it, which is maintenance, pretty much maintenance-free.
Do you think there'll be a lot of overtime costs when they have, you know, permits on weekends or things like that?
No, I don't anticipate that.
Thank you.
Anything else from the select board? Joseph?
Rick, has the truck that, um, that audited for the ice slush, has that come in yet?
No, it's the one I just spoke of. It's, it's now in production. It has been in production for the last month at the Mack factory, wherever that is. Should be ready by the fresh. It should be ready for the next winter. It'll be two years old, I guess.
I have a question, and it may have already been, cause I arrived late. Obviously, we're at eight-and-a-half percent inflation in the U.S., but that's an average. The energy inflation's closer to forty percent, which I'm assuming is gonna have a huge impact on your budget, since most of the energy costs come into your budget. We have a limited cap on growth in revenue, so I assume then there's gonna be reductions somewhere to offset those costs. Is that discussion you're having now, how are you looking at things, or are you putting things off? What, what's your thought process for managing that?
Uh, we're hoping that we don't need to put anything off. Um, if we, in this year's review of the budgets, once we get to projected energy costs, we may shift some funds from one line to another in a particular budget.
So just to kind of piggyback on that too, then, Rick, Rick touched upon it a little bit. Uh, we're gonna, we're realizing, realizing some significant savings in our street lighting. For good reason, we switched everything over to LED. I'm hoping we can make up what we're saving over here to spread out mostly amongst the DPW building maintenance. So building maintenance is, is responsible for almost all electricity townwide, like paying those bills with the exception of, and I gotta talk to Jody about why we did this. When, when we switched over the new buildings, we placed that under, like, police pay for their own electrical bills, fire for theirs. I remember COA for theirs because we actually didn't know what to budget it initially, so we're hoping we're gonna see some savings there. We did reach out to our local rep from, uh, Eversource, asked them to get what they think the projections are gonna be. We've asked David to also take a look at it. Right now, no one knows the answer. They're, they're all, we'll get back to you, we'll do some research, but it's like, we, we, we have to budget whatever it is, twenty or thirty percent, somewhere in those budgets, and I'm hoping we can make it up there. If not, we're, I'm gonna have to cut some other places. You know, that's the way, we kind of get back to the spot where someone touched upon it earlier about, um, you know, capital being, I think Mark or Doug might have said, uh, capital being in the budget, and why did I take it out of the budget and place it in, uh, like we discussed back, uh, two months ago? There's areas that I'm going to need to cut, and I can cut corners by taking, for example, a cruiser out of the police budget to make sure that they have enough money in there for their electricity costs, because I know, if you really need it in the fall, we'll make it up to you. The finance committee may not like that, you can always change that around, but that would be my reasoning behind it. You know, I'm hoping free cash or whatever will be better in the fall. I need to get these electric bills to keep the lights on in this place here.
And we are talking, this winter's coming up, is this year's budget, which is really the, I mean, we budgeted a year ago for this winter before any of this really kicked in.
Yeah.
How are we looking for, or are we still?
We're okay right now. Um, you know, obviously, we did put some money in as part of, uh, Article two, to, uh, to address the fuel costs for the vehicles. I think we'll be safe with that. Uh, the electrical costs, we haven't really felt that at this point.
Okay, good. Thank you. Other questions?
Anything else from the select board? Okay, Rick, thank you. That was really helpful and, uh, gives us a good sense for what to be expecting as you move through the budget cycle this upcoming year and keep us...
Any, any questions? Anybody has any questions, feel free to reach out. Anybody wants to see any of the equipment or the facilities, let us know.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rick.
Great, Chief Kelleher, I think we're gonna go to police next. I do have some handouts. I was gonna use the power plug, but I don't wanna restrict the microphone, uh, ability, so I'll just stand these out here. Take a look if you go along, I know there's more than this, but... I appreciate it. There's a lot of pictures in there.
I'm sorry.
Visual learning.
What was your aim budget?
I'll get back to you. Should've left them in the pile over there, I knew it. Put yourself out there, this is what happens. Uh, again, thank you for all, for having us here tonight. Uh, for those who don't know me, I'm Rich Kelleher, the police chief. Uh, took over just about a year ago now, actually, full-time, so, um, been a lot of learning on my end, and, um, I'm excited about, uh, the process. I've been with the department for almost, uh, eighteen years, so I'm not new to the town, just new to the position, so, uh, again, thank you for having us. Um, so essentially, um, I'll go through this, handle, kinda tell a little bit about what our agency does, what our priorities are, and, um, you know, we got more happy to answer any questions going forward. So I'll start off with our, our mission statement, um, and it's essentially to preserve the quality of life for all of Walpole residents by tailoring our efforts to precisely to the community, again, by letting the public set our agenda, um, and, and tailoring our needs based upon, uh, feedback we get. Um, we focus highly on community-oriented policing. I think as a lot of you know by our, uh, social media, uh, we do a lot of community outreach, um, and, and developing partnerships with the community is, uh, is very important to us. Um, so our budget is, um, just under seven million dollars. Um, in terms of our staffing, we have, uh, forty-seven sworn officers right now. Uh, we're authorized at forty-eight, so we have one spot left to fill, and we're in the process of doing that right now. Um, so we have, uh, myself, the deputy chief, three lieutenants, uh, that'll receive patrol, special services and administration, um, eight sergeants, seven of which are on patrol, and one is a detective, uh, twenty-eight patrol officers, five detectives, one community resource, uh, school resource officer, and then the most famous police officer of all, our community resource dog, Rebel, who was photographed, um, next to our staff. Uh, we also have, um, ten dispatches, which do both police and fire. Um, we have one dispatch supervisor that oversees the operation and actually does take calls and access a dispatcher as well, and then nine full-time dispatches. Um, we run two dispatches on every single shift, one for police, one for fire, um, and again, they work twenty-four, seven, three, sixty-five, as, as we all do. Um, they take not only nine-one calls, but non-emergency calls, um, walk into the lobby, um, and they, again, like I had mentioned, they, they dispatch both police and fire, and they maintain our dispatch log, which, um, is obviously a requirement. So they have a lot of responsibilities, and we do ask a lot of them, and they, they do a fantastic job. As dispatch is really the center of, of everything we do. Um, we have a civilian support staff, um, of one full-time administrative assistant. Uh, I think, uh, maybe if you know Judy, uh, she does the payroll, uh, accounts payable, detailed billing, and basically everything around the police station. I picture her there wearing, um, that's Chief Comical's hat, but she essentially is, um, the glue that holds us all together. Uh, we also have two part-time clerks. Um, one does firearms licensing, and one does, uh, public records requests, um, which is, which can be, um, extensive at times, and, uh, they also assist Judy in her, her daily operations, so they're very important to us as well. Um, as I go through this, I highlight some of our specialized units, and the reason I did that is, um, when I, I started, for those who don't know, I started with the Medfield Police Department in two thousand and five, and after being there for a couple of years, it was a smaller department with minimal chance to do different things, and when I had the opportunity to come to Walpole, um, they had chance for advancement, invest, uh, going to detectives, motorcycles, anything you wanted to do, and I said, you know, this is really would be more, um, fulfilling for me, so I transferred, and, um, it was the best decision I had ever made, so I, I'm grateful for that. So I'm gonna highlight some of our specialized units here because I think it's important that, that we have these units, not only to adequately serve the community in a variety of different ways, but also to keep our officers engaged and interested in the job, which also helps with recruitment and retention, um, and, and things along those lines, because again, um, we are seeing, like many other, um, uh, trades or industries, uh, dwindling candidate pool of people that are willing to take, uh, this job. So I'll go through these briefly, um, just to give you an overview of what we do specialized, and, um, we'll go from there. So first, we, we're all, we're part of Metro Loc, which is a, uh, a consortium of, of police agencies that cover, um, over six hundred square miles, uh, metro South Boston. Um, they have a tactical team, uh, search and rescue, motorcycles, uh, crisis negotiation, bicycles and peer support. We have an officer assigned to, uh, basically every one of those units, um, with six officers total that, that are part of Metro Loc. Now, they're full-time officers here, and this is their primary focus, but they do, uh, respond with these units as well. Um, the peer support unit is the one, it's probably, don't have anybody in yet, and that is coming online. I think we have an officer that is interested in doing that as well, so we do quite a bit, um, with that organization. Um, mobile operations, we have four, four motorcycles. Um, three of those motorcycles are on the road full-time, and one is shared by the remaining officers. We have six officers trained, um, in, on, on riding motorcycles, so, um, again, it's an, uh, uh, opportunity for them to do, um, something different. Their primary functions, they're traffic enforcement, they do a lot of special events, um, parades, community engagement, which is huge, cause they're far more, um, approachable, um, when they're sitting on a motorcycle than an officer in a cruiser, so we, we really take advantage of that, um, on, on that front as well. And they, uh, they also do a tremendous amount of funeral escorts throughout town, so you'll see them at Delaney's or elsewhere assisting in, uh, doing that. Uh, we have three ETVs, um, two of them are four-wheelers, as you see here, and one of them is a side-by-side unit, which is a lot older. It's a, it's a bigger, um, um, machine that, you know, we use for parades and, you know, search and rescue, things of that nature. Almost every single one of our officers trained using those machines, so it's, um, they're very well-used. They, we, again, for community engagement, they're, um, second to the motorcycles. They, they do, um, a tremendous amount for us. Um, bicycle unit, we recently, uh, purchased six mountain bikes through Capital two years ago. Those are here and online, um, and nearly twenty of our officers are trained in riding the, the, the pedal bikes. Again, far more approachable than office sitting in a cruiser. They get out more, they get to interact with the public more, um, and we use them for various special events, parades. They also respond, um, as part of Metro Loc and with, and with BPD, Boston Police Department, to, um, to various, um, large-scale events in the city, so they get to kind of experience different things, uh, as well. Our detective division, um, we have five detectives and one detective supervisor. Um, again, it is, they investigate pretty much a wide variety of cases, anything that is more, um, time-consuming that a pro patrol officer might not be able to, to accomplish on his own, on their own. Um, so they do narcotics, um, sexual assaults, serious assaults and batteries, um, robberies, breaking and entering, things along those lines. Um, they see around a hundred and fifty-five cases per year they investigate, so they are quite a, a busy unit. Again, um, all of them are very well-trained, um, and cross-trained in their various disciplines, so they're, um, very important to us. Um, crash reconstruction, we have one officer that is a full-time crash reconstructionist. Um, he's Detective Steve Foley, he's pictured there. He's also our co-prosecutor. He works in the detective division, investigates cases, but is also a reconstructionist. Now, there's not a lot of police departments in the state that have someone as qualified as Steve is, and we're very fortunate in that, on that regard. The state police used to do all of our reconstructions back, um, in the past. They're so short-staffed, they stop doing crashes unless they're fails, and Steve does a, a, a bunch of recons every year for us. He actually, um, teaches at the academy. He's, he's that, um, that well, well-known, so tremendous asset to our department, um, and, and again, he's, he's fully functional, full-service, and again, that, that service right at our fingertips, and I don't have to go outside of staff. Uh, we have a school resource officer, um, Tommy Hired, I know, probably know, a lot of you may know Tommy. Um, he handles our K-nine, our CID, I should call her, Rebel. Um, he does a tremendous amount, and he's very, very important to us in terms of being at the forefront of all of our community policing efforts. Uh, Tommy's right there. Um, he does a lot with the union as well, organizing community policing events and selling patches and T-shirts and all that stuff that really, um, helps us interact with the public. Uh, he's our primary liaison with the school department. Again, incredibly important. He handles day-to-day issues at the schools, um, anything they may need support on, kids that are having a hard time. He's got a background in, um, education, so he's a tremendous asset. Um, he also conducts all of our critical incident response drills at all the schools, so all the schools, they go through the Alice training. Uh, Tommy, Sergeant Howard Connor, Sergeant Matt Crown, um, go through and do all that training for all the schools twice a year. They do them for private businesses as well, anybody that may have an interest in it, so, uh, again, incredibly important role, lucky to have him. Uh, we also have school liaisons. I, I know in, in the past we had a lot of issues with, uh, the Home Flitter Wanderers, um, and, and some of the other specialty schools that we had, so we had assigned several years back, um, officers to be, to be liaisons to those schools, and then the primary contact point, um, with, with those schools, so it really reduces the call volume and the, and the stress on the patrol, on the patrol shift. So again, uh, pictured there is Officer Ben S. and Sullivan there at the, uh, Bayco School, and Officer Ben S. and Officer Byrd are, are at the, um, Home Flitter Wanderers, and again, I can't, uh, say enough about how important they've been for us. Uh, just real quickly, our community policing initiatives, uh, they're pictured there, you can go through them. Some new ones this year, we, we started with, uh, cones with a cock. We partnered with scoops on that. They were great, they were a great partner with us, and, um, the night before school started, the officers went up and, uh, the union had, uh, fronted the money for a whole bunch of ice cream, and the kids had a great night before their first day of school. It was so well-attended that they, they blew through their budget very quickly, but, um, you know, they made it work, so, good, good on them. And then we had a road race this year as well, um, which again, uh, we partnered with the local community, uh, a local business, and our union, um, stepped up and, and helped sponsor that road race for, to, uh, to try to fundraise for their community policing efforts. So our relationship with our patrol officers union is, is tremendous. They do a lot of stuff on their own. They, they're more than willing to step up and help us, um, when it comes to, uh, community engagement. Um, just real quick, we were, we were fortunate enough to be awarded with two community policing awards, um, in the past two years. One from the New England Chiefs of Police Association. Um, it was all in New England states, um, in our, in our size department. Um, we were awarded that award back last October, and then Officer Hired, um, was, was awarded, um, the Innovations of Community Policing Award for the Department of Justice, so that was, came from U.S. Attorney's Office, and a tremendous, um, honor for us. In terms of the budget, uh, like I said, we, we are at authorized strength of forty-eight officers, um, and I, I kind of went through there, um, the breakdown of all of them. Um, we have forty-seven right now, and again, we are looking to fill two spots, which we're doing actually this week. We're doing for those spots, because we do have one officer that is looking to retire in, uh, within this fiscal year in April, so we're trying to get ahead of that to fill that spot, and that will bring us to our authorized strength of, of forty-eight right now. Um, in terms of equipment, um, we did, uh, as, uh, Rick had mentioned earlier, um, we, uh, were able to add to our fleet through the last capital budget cycle, uh, which brought us to eleven mark cruisers and eleven unmarked, and also we have now four motorcycles. Um, we're very fortunate, and again, I, the support from the town on increasing our motorized fleet has been, um, tremendous to, to keep up with our growth, um, as, as a department to keep up with the population growth. So, um, right now, we are in pretty good shape, um, in, in terms of the patrol fleet, um, and thankfully, the vehicles that we had, um, ordered through Capital, um, a lot of them will be here very shortly. Actually, we had a very, we got kind of lucky with, um, McGovern, uh, Ford, they had some, some cruisers on the lot, and the mark cruiser was still there as well, unmarked cruiser was still there as well, and the stuff's all coming to us, hopefully by the end of this month, so, um, and we did fortunately get in before the prices went up on a lot of these cars, so we're in good shape on, on that front, which was promising. In terms of the future, um, ideally, uh, if you wanna go by the, um, the ratio of two, two officers per thousand people, we should be at fifty-two police officers, given the population in town, which we're about just over twenty-six thousand. Fifty-two is ideal. Um, I attach at the back of the, the packet, is... I attached at the back of the packet is a scheduling matrix, which kind of breaks down where every officer is assigned. And in order to fill that, that matrix up completely, 49 would fill that. So we'd have six officers on every squad, and then along with at least two supervisors on most of them, we do have one sergeant open in there. But that would allow us to be able to have six officers on a squad, and we believe we'll be able to bump up our shift minimum to four officers. Right now, we're only at three. We'd like to get to four. We think, we feel that having six officers in each one of those groups would give us enough to be able to run four officers minimum without burning out the officers. The reason why we haven't jumped in the past to doing this sooner is we don't want to have people getting forced every night and get burned out and not have, you know, be sharp enough to do their jobs. So many departments are going through this now, where they're forcing their officers in left and right, and it's really a detriment to morale and everything else. So we were careful about how we manage this, but I think, and I feel, if we can fill out this matrix to get to 49 officers, we'll be able to do that safely. And then if we can get to 50, you know, which is really a good number, we were trying to get to for a while, we'll be able to reassign some folks and maybe put one more detective in that office or something along those lines to shift that around a little bit. But that's kind of where we're at right now. I know the ratio of two officers per thousand is kind of the benchmark, but, you know, again, 50 would be a working minimal number for us, I think, to get to. And, you know, again, we're working in that direction, I think we're, even though we're one behind right now, I think we're in better shape than some are. And again, just some of the stats there that we put together just about from 2021, over 21, almost 21,000 calls for service, 136 arrests, 450 crashes. We're a pretty busy department, so the cops are always working. So one, I took this away from our conversation last year in this meeting, was how many officers do we lose on an average every year? I think you mentioned that to me. So we went through back to 2,000, and on average, some we lose on, some we lose five, but two cops per year for one reason or another move on from the department on average. So again, per budget and planning, you know, going forward, that'll kind of be our number to request, to make sure we're, when we get to 50, 48, 50, 51, that we stay ahead of that, so we don't fall behind and have a staffing shortage. Because right now, we're pretty close, but obviously to be ahead of that would be ideal. Again, so in terms of some significant expenses that are coming up, our firearms are reaching the end of their usable life. So within two years, we'll look to replace the weapon systems. The estimate I got from our armor is around $80,000 to replace all those. And again, that's a couple of years out, but just so we can start planning for the future as we go forward, we replace them every five to seven years anyway, so it's not, it's a new thing, it's just it's going to be coming up in a couple of years, so. And again, maintain the vehicle fleet. We're in a pretty good spot right now, but we'd like to replace two cruisers a year, so that way every three years, all the cars get churned out. And we don't have any major problems with warranties or things breaking down on us, which is going to be significant expenses that go on our budget. Also, I know the mental health clinician has been talked about at a number of meetings, and I think we're actually pretty close to bringing somebody on board. We met with a person last week who is promising, so I'm hoping to have that spot filled in early December with some training with Riverside, and they'll get to us by the first of the year. That's kind of the standard plan. We liked the individual we met. I think they'll be a good fit for us. So again, that's a development that's promising, because it's been kind of a long time coming. One thing to keep in mind is the grant that we have right now is $93,000, all in total. That's with some benefits to go along with the salary. Going forward, in the way the grant works right now, beginning in FY '25, 25% of that will be on us eventually getting to FY '28, what we'll be responsible for completely. Now, that may or may not happen. There's been some talk that the grant funding may go longer. Again, it's going to be something to keep on the radar, and obviously, you know, as we plan ahead to make sure that we stay ahead of that and make sure that person, because I think that, quite frankly, that this spot is more than needed. Some towns are sharing two clinicians. We were told we get one full-time, one all on our own. And we have almost 656 calls last year, and we're trying in that direction this year. That's a lot of mental health calls. So this person will be able to come in, help us mitigate some of these issues, have officers spend less time doing that and more time doing law enforcement-related work, and they can also just give better services to the people that need it. And that's really, really the end goal. All of our officers are very well-trained in this, but I think that position is going to be a trickle. So I feel that, you know, when the grant runs out, we're still going to have definitely a need for that spot, and I think we'll have to manage funding that as we go forward. And finally, our IT manager is something that we've put on as a request in recent years. Right now, we're spending close to $113,000, $16 a week. A lot of that's offset through a 911 grant, which works out well. My fear is that someday that grant won't be there anymore. So IT is incredibly important. We have a lot of needs for security here. The data we have is sensitive, so we need to make sure all that stuff's up to date. Delphi, who we use right now, does a great job, but as our systems are aging, you know, it's going to require more maintenance. And right now, a lot of that falls on our lieutenant, the administrative lieutenant who deals with a lot of that. So again, I think it's not highest priorities, but it's something in the future that we'll certainly need to look at, so. Apologies if I was a little long-winded on that, but if you have any questions, we'd be more than happy to answer.
Yeah, really good sheet. Mark, Ellie, anybody?
I have a question, just on your contract negotiations with the union. Is the contract up this year or next year?
Yes, it is up, yes. It expires this June 30th.
We have some finality to that. I know you don't know precisely when, but is there an expected date when a contract needs to be done and renewed by?
Well, we certainly need to have it done in plenty of time for to finish this up before town, obviously. The union president has been already reached out about beginning that process, so.
Do you have some more information on that in the new year?
Yes, I would hope so, yeah. Obviously, you know, we'll have to sit down and start that process and see what we can get, but yeah, definitely like to have an answer on that, so we'll have it later for sure.
Sure.
Yeah.
Thanks, Tom.
Hey, Chief, I assume you have, you know, people working shifts, you know, because you need them and you're paying them overtime. Is there, like, if you added one or two more officers, would overtime actually go down because you're, you know, you're paying people regular time for shifts that you're currently paying overtime for?
Of course, yeah. If we had additional officers on our staff, we would have to fill, you know, less shift than overtime. We put us on a regular shift, and yes, that would definitely reduce. One thing we were cautious enough is when we were looking to increase our shift minimums, was how much that would cost us. And I think if we have sufficient officers there assigned to those rotations, the overtime would be less. So yes, to answer your question.
Because I assume you're paying time and a half, or you pay regular time?
Yeah, if we drop below shift minimums, yes, we pay officers time and a half, yeah. Correct.
Can I just follow on on that one?
Sure.
So, two questions on that one. One, what's the impact on the morale of cutting the overtime? Because I'm assuming that police officers' lifestyles are, expect a certain amount of overtime as part of their compensation and knowing, obviously, working it. And two is, if you bring it up to 50 people, is that overtime calculated into cost savings? Could that financially match out to the cost of salary? Is there a balance?
Yeah, there would be, yeah. Again, the numbers in my head, I couldn't share with you, but I do agree that yes, there would be a balance there that would equal out, correct. In terms of morale, yeah, of course. I mean, everybody likes money.
Yeah.
You know, we're in a position where we have the ability to work private details as well, so construction details, so that's an income source for some officers. What we do see now is a shift a little bit, is that more officers would like to have their time off than they would to come in and work overtime. So it's just kind of a bit of a shift, you know, where we do see some officers take that as comp time, some take it as overtime. You know, we still fill up our shifts, but back before, you would never see a senior officer working anything other than a night shift, because they wanted to work overtime all the time. We see more quality of life things now. Younger people want to be around, be home more, be off more, so. Yeah, it's interesting, but I think having the private detail does offset some of those potential morale issues.
Good. Mark or Ellie?
My question really comes around the control. How are we doing with that? Where are we at with that?
So we have, it's working out right now. They are responding appropriately. We was, you know, when it first started, there was some things we had to work out, but I think that it's definitely improved. We picked the phone up, they come right out now. I believe, Jim, they have to four now, right? Between the two towns?
Using all the vehicles that we were going to get rid of, they needed an extra vehicle, so one of the rangers that we were going to trade in for $2,000, we've agreed to allow one of the ACOs to use that. I think it's working out better now that we've, you know, we're two, year or two into it, worked out some of the kinks. Patrick and I have a great relationship with the general manager and assistant general manager over in Norwood. It's just a matter of costs. I know some committee members last year voted against it because you were concerned at the cost of the ACO position. I haven't gotten together with Tony over in Norwood to find out what his proposed cost is. So depending on what the cost is, that kind of is going to factor into whether or not the board, my office, Rich, wants to advance that forward.
Does that falls within this budget?
Yes.
It has a total separate budget, under public safety, though.
Yeah. Joseph?
On mental health clinicians, within the past two years, either Linda or Frank from the field, Rich, had a grant similar to this, and they brought on some. Have you had any feedback as to how that worked out or did not work out?
I didn't speak with those two particular chiefs, but I have spoke to the chief in Needham. And it's worked out well. You have to have the right fit, because they're being better with the officers, and that's kind of what has taken us a while on this front. We did have someone with a while back that was going to be a good fit, and it didn't end up working out. This individual seems, you know, it fit the criteria that Riverside was looking for. And then when we met with this individual, it seemed like they would be, they worked well with us as well. So that's important, is having the right person, not necessarily the most qualified, but the right person that is ready to do this job and be around law enforcement. So, yeah, these programs are working out well, and I'm hopeful it'll work out well here.
Hypothetically, how would that work with the clinician? And granted, you're probably, I would rationalize in a long way, you've got a plan as to how you think this is going to work out, otherwise it wouldn't be here.
Right.
So what is your implementation of including this? Would he or she ride with the officer, or he or she show up when a call comes in in a hypothetical situation?
So I think it'll be a little bit of both, the way I envision it. And it could change when they come in here, because maybe it'll be something totally different than what I'm thinking. But the idea would be that they would work out of this police station, hours to be determined, probably afternoons to early evenings, five days a week. And they would, they would be, if they had work to do in the office, they could work in the office, and if there was downtime, they could ride with the officer. And then in the event that they were needed, we would contact them. And again, it would be preference to the individual, whether they wanted to ride in the cruiser with the officer or take their own car and meet them there if it's something that they wanted to do, how they preferred it. That's kind of how we envision, kind of a hybrid of the two, wouldn't be like a full-time patrol type of thing, but have the ability to come back to the office, do what they need to do, but in downtime, ride around, or maybe even go out and do some outreach. And we do plan to have them do overdose outreach as well, which is all being done by our detective division. So that would be something that would, you know, we could either escort them there should they feel unsafe, or they could do that, you know, in their own vehicle in their own time. So I think a hybrid is really the answer.
Hypothetically, with this individual, whoever, maybe, do they have the contacts for any type of follow-up for psychiatric care for any individual that they come in contact with?
Yes, yes, they would, that was the asset of being Riverside, is they would have the full complement of Riverside services, their database, their information. And then they have the ability to actually fill out Section 12 paperwork and do actually even evaluation before they go to the hospital, which saves time for everybody. So, yeah, they would be full service through Riverside with all the assets at their fingertips, so that's really what we don't have.
Could you explain what Riverside is?
Oh, sorry. So Riverside Community Care is a mental health organization that's based out of this area, and what they do is they offer mental health services on an emergency basis, or, you know, they come out and do in-home visits or wherever those that may be struggling. So they cover our service area. So when we partnered with advocates initially to get this grant, we were then directed to Riverside, who this is within their service area. So we worked with them for quite a while. We have crisis intervention meetings here once a month. They send representatives, so, and they share information with us about who we're dealing with regularly, and they offer, you know, their assistance. So again, their focus is mental health and not inpatient therapy.
And my last question on this, the grant covers $93,000, and then the department will gradually take over phases of it until '28, will supposedly be 100% that it's taken over. Is this person that you're hiring, this person going through a contract for all that? Or is it this person will be here for a year, and then you have to secure a second person? To not knowing how that could work out, what is the commitment that you get from this person? Would it be for the full term to '28?
It could be the full term. We don't have, it's not a year-to-year contract right now. It would be, if this person worked out, they'd stay with us. And either join us, or, you know, however we decide to go in this full year '28. I'd imagine this program will continue, because I think there's such a need for it. So I do, I don't envision having to re-up a contract or try to find a new person every two years, every year. I think this would be the same person, provided things work out like any other employee. If they worked out with us, they'd stay with us. And I think that's actually beneficial, because you want to have the same person build relationships. You know, we have people that call to here like five times a day, so I hate to have that person after they build a rapport with somebody, then have to come in a year later and do it all over again, so.
Thank you for the conversation.
You're welcome.
Chief, I have a question for you. How are things going with Longview Farm at this point?
Very well, actually. Things have been progressing and improving tremendously. We do have the occasional calls up there for kids that might take off, but they are much more careful who they bring up there now. The communication with our department is a thousand times better. And we have, again, our office, I've spoken to both of them plenty of times, Officer Ben S. and Officer Bird are fully invested up there, and that really does help as well by having a relationship and absorbing some of the stuff before it gets to the patrol officers, that they had, that would then be a burden on them as they're trying to, you know, manage everything.
Do you think that the mental health clinician could play a role there?
Yes. This individual we spoke with actually worked at Home Flitter Wanderers for a period of time, so that was, that jumped up off the page at us. And I was like, this is phenomenal, so, yes, absolutely. And that's also Riverside as well, so.
It would seem to me that that would be a logical, you know, extension. However, it's good to hear that things have improved. I know there was a period of time, or a couple of years ago, where it seemed like we were having a problem there literally every day.
Yeah.
And it sounds like things have gotten better.
Things pick up when, you know, any time you'd see, you know, kids with maybe some issues might act out around politics, when they change schools, when different things happen, things pick up a little bit. But in terms of being the nightly occurrence of three or four times, the same two or three kids signing up for officers, it's not like that anymore.
Okay. Well, I'm glad to hear that you've got another candidate for the mental health clinician identified, and it's going to be really important to get that nailed down. It feels like we have been talking about it for a while. I know you had one who got away, but it is important and something that I personally would like to see us get, you know, completed, so that we can start to not only take advantage of the grant, but start also hopefully getting at some of these, you know, mental health challenges. I mean, your chart shows what's been going on here since, it's hard for me to read, but over the last four years probably, and things have basically doubled, you know? And I'm always amazed when you come in and give the report out how many mental health calls we have. So I think it will be important to get that person on board and start, see what kind of an impact they can make.
Absolutely.
Great, thanks, Chief. Okay, Mark down there.
Chief, two questions, one's on the clinician. We're not actually hiring an individual, we're hiring a company that's providing a specific person, correct? So we're not responsible for benefits, we're just paying that company to supply us with that person.
Yes, yes, correct.
And then the grant runs out and then we make a decision.
And then we make a decision, correct, yeah.
And on current staffing levels, how many people do you need to be down before you have to call people in for overtime?
So right now, we need to reach three officers minimum on a shift. So anything below that, we bring someone out over time.
Select board.
Been a while.
Brian?
Chief, as an IT manager, is your vision to have that as an internal position, is that what your vision is?
Yes.
And is, do you have enough, is 40 hours too much for that position? Or it's only 16 now, or I'm seeing?
Right, so it, it's 16 now and the individuals here has plenty to do. I mean, I'm not an IT expert, so I wish I could speak to what they do every single minute of the day, but I can't. But what we do have is, is the major issue is that when little things, like this morning, like we have a bunch of different stuff go down, monitors go down, and a lieutenant had to go in and square that stuff away for us and figure out what needed to be done. That's kind of the need. It, it, it can be busy weeks, some slow weeks. We also are, and we did replace a bunch of our IT infrastructure through the most recent capital budget cycle, but as the stuff ages, there's more maintenance that needs to be done as we go along. The building's four years old now, so, and some of the stuff was purchased two years before we moved out of the building, so it's almost six years old. So, yeah, as we go forward, I think there'll be a lot more going on. And, you know, the, the fact that someone can't get into something or something got locked out or whatever happened or something broke, the lieutenant's gotta stop what he's doing right now because he's the only one that's got skill set, yeah, I mean, to do that. So I think it'd be, that'd be the real benefit.
If, if that were to happen, would we still be eligible for that 911 grant if it was an internal position?
Yes, yes, yeah.
And then to Jim, Jim, if this was something that was becoming fruition, it wasn't close to a week there, with everything being computerized these days, like would the town have a need for some of, for 15 hours or something?
We've talked about this in the past with Chief Keller and before that Chief Carmichael. And as I'm sitting here, I'm typing in both a note, nothing bad. I always have the same question, I don't remember if I got an answer. Can I use that 911 grant to fund personnel costs? I don't remember if I got an answer on that one. Two, if we're able to fund it, are we gonna be able to find someone for $80,000 to $90,000 a year to do this job? Because I remember the last time we talked about it. The person doing the job is well-known in the police state department, they're comfortable with him. And I've asked, can we go and steal that person from the company? And the answer was, we can't afford them, I believe, whoever that person is. So these are just some of my questions. And lastly, I always ask each police chief, okay, you're asking for three or four police officers, a part-time person, an IT director, maybe a dispatcher, rank the positions in order. To their credit, police officers are always a priority. Safe to say, chief.
Yeah, exactly. And I, including that in the conversation today, just so we're headed in our mind for the future. I actually spoke with Lieutenant Zanghetti himself, I said, Joe, I know that you've got a lot of stuff going on. And he said, we need to get the cops in here and then we can talk about this. So again, I, you know, we have talked about it, it gets brought up every single budget cycle and it's important. It certainly is important, but the, the police officers on the road are the most important thing, for sure.
I think way around that is if we could use that 911 money to fund partially or, you know, 75% of it, that would be much more easier to fund and justifiable, I know. Because in my head, it's also freeing up Lieutenant Zanghetti. Because he, when we were building this building, he was the go-to person for IT and everything. He's a smart guy and he knows, he knows this building inside and out, so.
Select board, other questions for the chief? Finance Cody?
Please.
Thank you. I'm so interested in this mental health clinician and I'm very glad that that's coming in or going to happen. But I had also hoped that that would be some cost savings because I do feel like the costs of, you know, the police department growing is a lot for the town to absorb. And it looks like it won't be at all unless there's something I'm missing. Like is it, if there were a call, obviously the, the mental health clinician is going to go with the police officer, I assume. Every time, everything always happens in pairs. But when police officers are called, do they sometimes go in more than two? And with the mental health officer, does that reduce a group from four or three to just two? If you can see from the call that this is really a mental health situation and not a crime situation? I mean, is there any, is there any savings here at all, is what I'm trying to get at?
Well, obviously because it's grant funded, you know, the first few years will be at no cost and then... But in terms of officers responding to these calls, some of them, some of these calls may not be requiring a police officer to respond with them. Some may, some may not. It's gonna depend on the call. And it's gonna be dependent on the comfort level of the individual when they come in. If it's the same person they've met with or several times over and over again, they may say, I'm good today. You know, I'll go up there, I'll talk to them, no problem, we have a good relationship. They may, if it's someone that's new and there's a volatile situation, then yes, we will respond and they'll respond with us as we normally would. You know, so it wouldn't reduce the number of cops that respond to the call. You know, we would obviously just send another person who picked them up and, you know, we would have enough people there on site. But it really depends on the call. And, and again, as, as this program progresses and, and the individual gets more comfortable, it could certainly eliminate the, the need for our response in probably some cases.
But it, it is basically the cost of another officer. Like you wouldn't, you're not including this person in your count of 48 or 50 or 52, even though for our budget, that's what it is.
Yeah, essentially, correct.
Okay. But I mean, it's important to have somebody with those skills, I, I support it. I just had hoped that that would be a place we could save some money.
Well, again, it, when I spoke with Lieutenant White about this, who's kind of spearheading the grant on this, the, the, there's a big question mark as to whether this grant will continue past, you know, what's been told to us already. We may be able to get into another fiscal year, we don't have to fund this. So it really depends upon, you know, how that works out and whether we think it's worth it to bring this person in on our own. I spoke with Select Board Member Barrett today on the phone and he had expressed some interest in, in having this person be a member of our department. So it, it's really gonna depend upon, you know, how this, this whole thing works out and then take feedback from, you know, you all and we'll go from there. But I, I do think that person needs to be here, for sure. And how we fund that will be, to be determined as we work through the budget process.
Would you say perhaps instead of an officer?
Have a clinician instead of an officer?
If that was the choice that you had to make?
Well, I think the police officer on the street's always gonna be the most important thing. It's our function, it's what we do, you know, we respond to calls for service. You know, I, I would not want to replace a police officer with a clinician, but I think that they're, they're both equally as important. So to find a way to balance that out and manage that would be important.
Yeah, thanks.
Sorry, you may have said this, but the shift minimums, are those, well, two questions. Is that set by the union or is that a town policy?
That's been, it's not by the union, it's by, years ago, well before me, based upon the size of the town, geographic area, cost of service. Three officers to safely serve the community would be the minimum officers on the shift.
And, and less than three requires time and half for the other to?
Well, the, yeah, so the other one, so if we drop down, depending on how far down we were, if we were down only one officer on the shift, yeah, we would fill two to get back to three. If not, we would fill one accordingly to get to that minimum.
Okay. And then for the, the re-losing efforts thing, that, that's not overtime, right? That's part of their shift?
Some of it is, some of it isn't. The, the initiatives, the stuff that, the events that we have, some of it's on overtime, some of it's not. We kind of have instilled in these officers now that it's part of their duties every day to go out and do the stuff on, on, on the shift, go to the schools on their shift, go talk to people on their shift. Sometimes we have events, we do put, we do pay for it through overtime. Sometimes they do it in a little shift, you know, it really depends on what's going on.
Other questions? Joseph?
A question I think possibly would return on, I'm an IT manager, the town has Mike.
Yes, we do.
He's awesome.
Yes, he is, great. We also have Doug who works under Mike, who's, he's kind of the number two in charge of the department there.
Okay. Is what is going on here and the elaborateness of everything you have, computer-wise here, above and beyond what the town would use, is it above and beyond what Mike's expertise is? Or are you safer staying with Delphi? I'm just wondering if we have an IT for the town, are your needs more exclusive and necessary to have this other company come in?
I asked that question the last few years and the answer is yeah, that person, that position is specialized. And Mike, I've, I've said to Mike, can you take a look at their systems? He goes, yeah, I can help them out with whatever, but it's specialized type of software. And if you get pulled over, dealing, interacting with the, the state and their system and everything, it's much different than what we have over in Town Hall and dealing with our services. And it's not something I'd look to Mike to say, go over and, the police department knows that Mike is available to help out. If there's, you know, something bad happens and that, you know, he's there to help, but he's not, he doesn't, he's not a specialized person in that specific area.
Yeah, certainly not, nothing to take away from Mike's skill set, it's just it's different. And it does do a lot of different stuff that, you know, obviously he deals with different things at Town Hall. This, Delphi is, does a lot for law enforcement.
I would rationalize they group up a lot of certifications and stuff that they have to meet over and above what their, you know, who they have. But I was just curious as to...
Similar to the animal control officer and the towns working together, is that an opportunity for an IT person?
I, I suppose it could be. It hasn't actually hit my radar yet to do, to regionalize something like that. Again, it would be for further discussion. I mean, it's, I guess it's a good point, you know, it's certainly an option. Truthfully, I haven't really dug into that too much, so, but it's something to think about.
Yeah, if that person is so specialized, every department must have somebody who are Delphi contracted help, so.
Right, absolutely.
Other questions? Yeah?
Just one more, is that the same thing for the payroll accounts available? Is that specialized for the reason why you have a person dedicated for that? Or do all departments have their own payroll person?
So I know I, us, the police department, the fire department as well, yeah, she, it's not that it's specialized, it's just that this, you know...
There's so much, best not to cut the chief off. But I put together a chart, so I know, you know, all six of our unions are up. The police department is the most complicated when it comes to payroll. And when Deputy Gilroy was the union president, him and I had this big long chart that went on for days and days when we were trying to figure out night differential, education incentive, regular, there's some others in there, isn't there?
Probably six.
Yeah. It's, and that position is, I know she's under, I think she's 14 or 18 hours a week or 16. She's under the benefit, she's not, doesn't qualify for the benefits, she's part-time. So it's, I think we get a lot of value with that given position.
Oh, sorry, it's part-time, it says full-time.
So the, the, the avid assistant that does all the payroll stuff is full-time? We have clerks that do part-time stuff.
She is an assistant, yeah, that's, that's all right.
So he, Jim is absolutely correct, it's institutional knowledge, which is what makes her invaluable. But yes, so it, it's, yeah, she does, she does so much stuff I couldn't even begin to tell you. Basically, it is absolutely, it's basically everyone, I guess. She wears that hat for a reason. But yes, I don't, to be honest with you, I don't know what I'd do without her. So she'd be a new, so she'd be great.
Okay, select board, last call of questions, comments?
I've got a question, but anyone else from the finance committee first? So your goal is to get, it sounds like your goal is overtime is to get to 52 officers, is that...
Ideally, based on population, yes.
You're 48 now. From listening to you, it sounds like you'd like to get one more officer, 49 next year. Is that something that you would be, plan on requesting?
Yes.
Just 49 or would you, are you looking?
Well, we, we make the, we would request to get to 49 and then, you know, additionally to, to confer a possible attrition.
Yeah, but the goal, your budget, you would like to budget next year for 49, is your goal?
That would be the goal, yes. So we can get to that point where we can do some of these, these little things we've been talking about for a while.
Wonderful.
Chief, thank you.
Thank you, thank you all.
Appreciate it. Chief Bailey is final.
We don't eat at the fire station.
So good evening and thank you. For those that don't know me, I'm Tim Bailey, I am the fire chief. I've been with the department for 36 years, I've been the fire chief, it'll be 18 years this January. I've had experience of being in front of many of you many times. So I hope I don't repeat myself on everything, there is some of it that is repetitive and I apologize for that, but it is, it needs to be heard, so. To start off with, on the first page, just an overview of our stations. The first one is Station 1, which was built in 2018. That was built to house 11 personnel. Currently, we have five personnel working out of that station. Next is Station 2, which was built in 1911. It has had a few upgrades over the years since we started using it. We went into that station back in 1996. We went in there and we were in there for, until 99 when we had layoffs and then it closed for a long period of time. During COVID, it was reopened again and it has remained open with the help of the board and allowing us to increase our minimum staffing from eight to nine. And we're still currently working at the nine-person limit out of two stations. Then the last station is Station 3, which has no living quarters. It does have a big room upstairs. It does have a toilet facility on, located on the second floor. Nothing that's handicap accessible on the first floor as far as bathrooms or anything like that. We use that primarily for storage and for stadium events. Any solo stadium event, the stadium picks up the tab for us to have an engine down there with staffing to provide for our town. It's not to provide for the stadium, it's to provide for us and access for us in that area town, which can get a little dicey during some of the events that we've had. On Station 2, you'll, you'll, I'll let you just mention it now. I've asked for money next year out of capital for a feasibility study to look at relocating Station 2 with the hopes of putting it somewhere more simply located near the Route 1 corridor by Route 1 and 27, somewhere in that area, to bridge the gap between Station 2 and Station 3 and then do away with both of the older stations. This would be for a lot of reasons, but one is just that the, the amount of maintenance that's required with Station 2. It does not fit most of the apparatus that we have. We've made it fit, we have two engines that currently will fit in there. The ambulance is very tight fitting in there, but we, we have been able to make it fit and by some means that aren't exactly the best, but it, it does fit. So extremely tight, though, and the two new engines that are on order and have been on order for over a year now will both be able to fit in that station when they come. So we have planned for staying there, but optimally would be to have a different location and move that station out of there to better serve the community. The reason for Route 1 and 27 and in that area, that's where most of our commercial properties are, is out on that corridor. And that would give us better access and better response times by being closer to Route 1 to go both East Walpole area, South Walpole area. Currently, Station 2 operates that district. Their district is all of Washington Street and everything towards the Sharon side for Station 2 and that's all the way to South Walpole. So they have some long runs out of that firehouse, but that's what works best for us with our current configuration. On the next page is just a, a map. The shows with the red dots indicate where the stations are. The one at the bottom would be Station 3, then Station 1 in the middle and then up into the right-hand corner would be the current location of Station 2. As you can see, those cover that, that corridor pretty, pretty well with their dispersal. The North Walpole area, which is a different response route, it has more conservation, more, larger area, does not have a station that's as close. Most of that response is done out of the center station. Some of our outlying spots, and I know it'll come up as a question, so I'll answer it now. a question, so I'll answer it now, we have those on joint response with the Town of Westwood. Depending on the call and the severity of the call, we call them automatically from anything from Brook Street to the, up to County Street, and then anything down into the Apple Tree Lane neighborhood. The next page is just a quick breakdown. Some of your city before, this was done in 2019. There have been some modifications to it. Dennis and I weren't able to get it out for tonight's meeting, but the gist of it is, is there's 12,488 structures within the Town of Walpole. The unit number corresponds to some of the condo units and the breakdowns. Most importantly is the single-family is 6,500, and then we have 291 commercial properties throughout the town. And then the rest is, as you can see, some of the multifamily has increased with the addition since 19 of downtown, Pennington Crossing, with the Summer Street project getting underway. That'll be on that list as time moves forward as well. The next page is a breakdown. Our population as of today was 26,383 through the clerk's office. Our call volume has increased by 32% since 2014. In 2014, we did 2,928 emergency calls. In 2021, last year, we did 4,296. We are currently on pace to do 4,300, 4,300 emergency calls this year alone. The total calls for service back in 14 has increased since, by 45%, and that is a combination of all of our inspectional activities and permitting, as well as our emergency response. And we grouped those numbers together for total calls for service. As you can see, back in 14, we had 5,512. Last year, we had 8,030. We're on pace to do similar to that in 21. Our call volume is a little bit higher than it was. Our inspectional rates are down a little bit, and some of the reason that the inspectional rates are down is the housing market has taken, gone away for the most part, and we've had a significant decrease in resales. So we're down by almost 150 just on that line alone. And then some of the other lines, it's, it had an impact as well with the, where the economy is and where our inspections fall. The next one is a, the number of personnel per 1,025. This is from NFPA did a fire service survey. This is as of January 20, and these numbers that I'm giving you reflect that. So when I was here the last time, the population was 25,142. 2.07 factor, if we, you have the 40 to 45-hour work week. We work a 48-hour, 248, 224s in a week, in a week. However, over the course of the year, it averages out to 42 hours a week. So I gave you both numbers of what they are. And the significance in both numbers with the 2.07 factor or the 2.43 factor is that they're still higher and shows that we still need more personnel, which is the reason I showed you both numbers. It's still over and above where we're at today and where we're trying to get to. The next page is a snapshot of where we are today. And the easiest part of it is, well, not the easiest part. So if you start at the top of it, you have the chief, administrative assistant, deputy, over to the right-hand column. Those are firefighter positions and some of my offices as well, that have the motor coordinator, SCBA coordinator. All those coordinator positions are part of the contract. And. Yep, and I know why. Sorry. Thank you. I ran out of copies when I made mine. I knew that was going to happen. I did put in here for, for your, your knowledge what NFPA 17-10 is, and the standard and what is required of that standard. It defines the turnout time, the response time. We should be on scene of our calls within eight minutes. It tells how many people, which is 15, are required, 17 if we're using the aerial. And it's pretty self-explanatory. Just, it goes down, each thing is explained. And then they give a little graphic at the end of it, which tells you the unknown, unknown, how long to get out from notification to dispatch and so forth. And then that adds up to an eight-minute response. It also does the EMS side of things, which says we should be on scene on a BLS call within 240 seconds, which is four minutes, or eight minutes for ALS. And the second one is the ALS graphic. Now to the yellow sheet that I was referring to, the current needs and the immediate need. So this does both, and what it does is it highlights that you have the chief, the deputy, the administrative assistant, and the fire prevention lieutenant currently. Over on the right-hand side are all the coordinator positions that we have through the contract. They take care of various things within our job that all need special attention, and they pay the stipend in order to take care of those. The EMS officer I have on here is a critical need that we need. We run the ambulance service here in town, as well as the fire service, and it has become increasingly difficult to run both of those simultaneously without someone that's there all the time to assist me with that. I have an EMS coordinator and an SCBA coordinator right now. They're both on shift. It's very hard to get the coordination of all the stuff that has to be done. We have a major ambulance inspection coming up next week, and all the licensing and permitting that goes along with it. It really does, should require another position that's a full-time day position. That would be in addition to the fire prevention lieutenant. So when you look at the chart on Group Ones through Four, the non-highlighted is where we currently are and where we're operating. With the exception of the ambulance one is out of Station Two. What I would like to do when we get to the full staffing, which is if we were to get higher, the two yellow lines, which is eight more personnel, that would put us at a 13-person staffing. We would drop to 11, and then I could bring the other ambulance uptown. And we would, because all of our personnel are cross-trained, is both majority are medics now, but they're all cross-trained in the medical end of things, and they're also cross-trained in the fire end of things. We would be able to have more personnel available for the tower in order to respond with the tower when it was needed. So we could cross-staff that with the both ambulance crews. It would give me two more people uptown to utilize for that, that configuration. It's a little confusing where I have them already at Station One. Ultimately, that's how I would like to do that, but until we get to enough people, having two people on the engine, right now with the four personnel down to Station Two, we cross, we actually respond with both pieces and so that we have enough people to staff that engine, because two people really does not meet a safe level to staff that. The other thing that I added to this particular one was the current age demographic of our department with the staffing that you see above, which is for the, currently at 11 people. So we, you can see, we have a lot of, in the 20 to 40 age grad group, we have 33 personnel. We only have one person in the 40 to 49 age group, and then the 50 to 59, we have, and that number is the number that's a little bit scary, because we have 13 of us that are in that age group. There's three of us that can retire within a year's time. Some of us are there now. The rest can go within anywhere from three to 10 years, depending on how, what they use of services. We have to have 32 years. 32 or 55 is the ultimate number, but we can stay as long as 65 before we age out. Those folks will all be in the pipeline for replacement as we move forward. So with the academy being nine months currently, in order to get someone into the academy, our hiring process is very long in order to make that happen. So we've tried to stay ahead of that curve. It's becoming increasingly difficult because finding paramedics is very difficult. We've brought many EMTs onto our job because our contract allows it, and we have up to two years to train them to paramedic level. We have many that are in that pipeline right now. We also have many that have just stepped out of that and are actually just getting their ticket now. So as of the other day, we still have five people that are waiting for their, three that are waiting for their ticket, two that are waiting to actually test out. So then we'll be in really good shape as far as our medics go. One of the other issues that we're running into, though, with our medics is that they have to all be paired up with a medic that has two years of experience on the ambulance. As a new medic, you have to be on two years with another medic. So it's caused a lot of shifting of our schedules and making it work to make, so we have the right configuration on that for the folks. And the last page I have you is just to meet 17-10, this is where we would need to go. It adds another component to it. It adds a training officer, which, again, because we have a training officer that is currently on shift, it's very difficult for that person to come in, other than on overtime, to meet with all the different groups, to do the training that is necessary for us. By having a full-time training officer there, we'd be able to train every day, and that person will be able to oversee and make sure that the continuity of the training was where it needs to be. We're currently lacking in that a little bit. We're doing our best that we can with the current configuration, but we really could use a full-time training officer as well. I've also added another administrative assistant. My administrative assistant does just about everything and anything that you could think of within the Fire Department. And one of the areas that we need help in is on the fire prevention side of things, another administrative assistant over there. Even if it was a part-time to start, it would do two things. One, it would help with that workload there, and it would also help to succession planning for when Linda retires as well. None of us are here forever, and there's a huge learning curve with that position. So we'd like to try to get ahead of that if we could. So on the grouping, it's pretty straightforward. It would be, as you see it in front of you, we would be able to put the ambulance back down at Station Two, and with this number of people, I'd be able to take and staff the third ambulance with the tower crew, and have a third ambulance as well that could respond to call. We lose a lot of our calls to outside departments. We go to a lot of theirs, they come to a lot of ours as well. That would give them much more flexibility to make that work. That would be a 17-man, a 17-person shift, drop to 14 on any given day. If everyone came in, you'd have 17, but usually that doesn't happen with vacations and sick and long-term injury. And with that, I can answer any questions that anyone may have. I know I threw a lot at you at once, but.
Chief, on the, so the 17 and the 14, to meet the 17-10 standard, 17 and the 14, how does that equate to what's actually on board today?
Numbers-wise?
Yeah.
It's significant. It would be another 23 personnel.
So the 17 is actually what today? 11?
Correct.
11?
Yes.
And, and the minimum then would be three under that?
Minimum currently is nine.
Nine, okay. So it's 11 and nine?
Correct. So one of the issues that we have right now for the next two weeks is that we are currently at nine on three groups.
Yeah.
Filling man-to-man, and the other group is at 10. In two weeks, once they graduate, we'll have 10 across the board and one group of 11.
Okay. And what do you authorize to right now?
45.
45. And what do you have on staff right now?
Well, on the 29th, we'll be in four, so then I'll have three others in the academy. So 42.
42. So it'll still be three under?
I, I have them. They're just there. We're waiting to go to the academy.
Gotcha. Okay.
I have one that started two weeks ago, one that started this past week. I have another one that goes on January.
Okay. And then?
Last one gets out on March 17th.
And, and then you'll be at the 45?
Then we'll be at the 45.
Perfect. Assuming no one else drops out.
Correct.
One of the things that I, I think we need to be aware of is it's been a while since we've been at full staff. And this is because there's a constant churn in the Fire Department. And so the chief has a great deal of difficulty getting to full staff, and it's compounded by the fact that now you've got these academy challenges where you just can't get the seats in the academy. You can hire the firefighters, but you can't get the seats in the academy. So that has been something that, you know, we've been pushing kind of hard on to get to the full staffing. And we've even told the chief, look, if you have enough two over, that's fine, we'll deal with that, because there's just this constant churn. But that then doesn't even get to the point of the, of the 17-10 standard, which says, you know, you, you really ought to be at a much higher level than this. So one of the things that I think we've got to figure out is over the next some years, this isn't something that will happen overnight, but over the next some years, how do we get closer to the, you know, what the 17-10 is asking us for, and, and make sure that we're, you know, well-prepared to, to cover the town the way we should. I also think that we'll get a little benefit in, what, two years, hopefully, when the new Norwood Hospital comes online, because right now we spend a lot of time going to hospitals that are much further away, and that should help. But it doesn't by itself solve the manpower problem. So it is something I think we've got to work towards.
Yes.
Denny?
How many towns in the surrounding area is it, are at the 17-10 standard? Is that, is that the, that the goal to get there, but no one's close?
That's the goal, yep.
Yeah. Do you know any that are there, or?
No, it's probably the closest.
Okay.
Then Needham, Wells, that way.
Good. And when did?
We have, we have more population than most of the towns around us, although some of the towns are better staffed than we are.
And when did 17-10, is that a recent one, or is this?
No, it's been around for a while, many years.
Been on this for a while. I should have paid attention, but I just don't remember the number. So, thank you.
Glenn, Mark, Kelly?
I was just going to ask, as far as turnover, I mean, being on Finance Committee prior to, for a number of years, we talked about, how do we get more in the academy? How do we get, you know, can we go on a strong additional in getting those spots? But what is the turnover, and what are we losing higher, like once they're in the academy? Are they staying in Walpole?
So they usually.
Kelleher mentioned like two per year, so you know.
Yeah, so what ends up happening is they, they stay through the academy, they come to us, and then some have left. I just lost a two-year firefighter to a job in South Carolina.
Which is really challenging.
And. Nine months ago, I lost another firefighter to New Hampshire. Three, three-year firefighters, so it's.
It's a challenging, it's a challenging job to get, you know, the fire, fire department fully staffed. So it's nice to hear that we're getting close.
We're trying.
Still lacking, so.
I, I would be very comfortable if we could get to the 13 and drop to 11 as a, as a daily number. I think that's realistic and approachable. The other number is where, where it'd like to see us be, but I understand that's going to take a long time for us to get there and a lot of work to get there. But if we could get to the 13, that would be huge. Because that would allow me the flexibility then, at 11 staffing, to bring, staff that other engine with three down in East Walpole and bring another ambulance uptown, and run both ambulances out of a central location for better response with the ambulance, plus give me the cross-staffing with the, you know, the tower.
And the other part that's concerning is just the population that's kind of getting closer to retirement, and, and that's sort of, that's sort of a significant number.
It is. And no one tells you until it's, it's ready to go.
Denny?
Mark?
Chief, with regards to the existing Station Two, how many people does that actually sleep at this point? Is it only four or six?
Five.
So it's five. So a larger station at your max would be required to house the overnight?
If we, correct. If you had everyone in, correct.
On the administrative assistant, what timeframe are we looking at for that retirement? I mean, you're talking two to three? Two to three years, or?
I don't think it'll be that long, but I can't, I don't have a definite.
I'm just trying to set priorities. We were going to add three people. The learning curve has to start sooner on that position.
I, yes, it does.
Mark, Glenn? Okay.
Good.
Scott? Yeah, I just had the same question to the police chief. What's the sweet spot as far as staffing related to, you could minimize overtime to the point where people aren't upset about it, and you could, you know, potentially, you know, where it's financially, you're kind of, you know, you're adding two people, but you're, you're not adding two people worth the cost because you're subtracting out some overtime requirements and, and you're getting your staffing better. Like, how, how, where would that be?
I've been doing this a long time, and we've hired people in the past, and the minimum has changed. The overtime has never gone down. The overtime stays pretty much where it's been. In, in my case, it's at 550, but it, it doesn't really change. In my case, it's at 550, but it doesn't really change much. You would have to drop even more folks off the other end for your minimum, in my opinion, to see an impact. Because you've got to understand, our overtime too is, we still rely on a lot of callback for our overtime. We cover sick, vacation. If someone's out injured, we just had a long-term injury leave, they had been out for two years, those folks take up spots on that group. So, we don't have, once they get assigned to a group, we could move them, but normally it's not advantageous to, because you make one group heavy, and you make another group even lighter than the other. So, that position becomes a fill. Like, right now, I'm filling man for man, man, person for person. So, on three of the groups, because we don't have the folks out of the academy yet in order to make that work, so...
Scott?
Lisa?
Can you hire people who have already been through the academy from other towns or other states?
We, if you can get them to come here, I'll hire them.
Well, but then, why wouldn't, why don't they come?
I don't know. I don't know. But we don't have people that are trained knocking on our door to come here. I do know that on some of the cases, of some of the individuals that have left to go to other departments out of state, that they don't have to do the EMS side of things. It's strictly firefighting, and they get put on an engine, and that's what they do. They'll still do EMS, but they do not do the transports. The transports here take a lot out of my personnel. They see a lot of stuff.
Is that something that we could solve, so that firefighters would stay?
I don't know how you solve that, short of taking the ambulance away, the transport piece.
Because you said you also have trouble getting EMS.
We do, getting paramedics. It's a statewide problem. It's not just here. We all deal with the same issue. We're all drawing from the same pool of paramedics, which is very small. And getting experienced paramedics is even harder. When the deputy, I'm sorry.
No, you finish.
When the deputy and I do our interviews with prospective candidates, because we're always trying to encourage local folks to come into the system too. And we always tell whoever it is that we meet, that, you know, get your EMT, which you have to have anyways, in order to go to med school, get into med school, but at the same time, go and work for a private ambulance company, and gain experience, because that helps you, and it helps us, when you come back again, you know, on candidates that we have to turn away, so. And it has proved beneficial. We have several that are now in our employ that took that route, so we try to mentor them along a little bit. We offer all of our support at the station, for them to come in during med school, even though they're not employees, they can come in, talk to our personnel, get schooled by our personnel on, you know, helping them to learn the trade, and, again, has proved very beneficial, so. And my folks like to do that.
Brian?
Chief, can this be done slowly, one at a time, for eight years? Or does this have to be four at a time to make it work best for you?
I will take it, however, and make it happen. Obviously, we have four groups, so if we can go across the board, that's always the easiest, but we've done ones, we've done twos, we've done fives. I mean, it depends on where the town's at and...
And we've been doing it consistently for like, the last eight years or so, adding, like, the chief said, one or two. You know, in the past, it was, oh, it's tough to get the fire department there, because you need to add four firefighters. At the time, it was probably 70,000 or so a firefighter. I budget, I just wrote down. So, we got 45 currently. He's looking for, desired would be 73. That's an extra $2.8 million. So, we've tried over the last eight years, sort of, you know, okay, we're not going to fill four firefighters all at once to keep the group's balance. Can't do that. Let's give them at least something, and fight for those one or two. Fire chief, deputy chief, over the last few years, we've gone for that National Firefighting Grant. We've changed up the combo, we've asked for eight firefighters, we've asked for four firefighters, three. We haven't been successful in getting that grant. But, you know, something to always keep in mind is, how do we get extra, you know, I think a lot, it's a contract year, contracts are up there. Every police and fire, and I'm sure all the other DPW various groups, are looking to see what other towns around us are getting. Our, you know, since I've been here, almost 19 years, we try to be about in the middle and keep it fair. We don't want to be one of the lower towns at, you know, a zero or 1% increase. We want to, you know, I have a whole chart. What have other towns given over the last two or three years? And I have it in a spreadsheet. I want to be average or a little bit above average, and I think there's a select board have agreed with that consistently over the last few contracts. We've tried to do that with the various groups, but roughly, and it's probably a little bit more, I estimate a firefighter and police officer, you get a budget of about $100,000 for them. Probably, that might be a little bit more, given the increased insurance costs, but rough number, about $100,000 for that position.
Yeah, I think we're going to have to continue to just pick away at it. We're obviously not going to go and jump to the 17 number per shift at this point. That'd be, it's impossible. That said, this is public safety we're talking about, and it is our number-one priority. So, you have to be thinking about what it means in a growing town, and our ability to meet the demand for services that the chief is under. So, I think we just have to take it seriously, but we've got to obviously be responsible in the way we do it, but we're going to have to just chip away at it over a number of years, just the way we've been doing, and over some period of time, we'll get there. I don't think there's any other way to do it. Kathy?
I agree, Denny. I don't know if this is Jim or the chief, but there, we lose people. Initially, when you said two people went to different states, I thought, well, the lifestyle thing, you know, there's more to it, we can't control that. But then you said, they don't have to do the same sorts of things. We're not asking, we're asking them to do more than these other states. So then I wonder, will the whole state of Massachusetts have any trouble hiring people? And are there any best practices where they seem to have better luck hanging on to people? If I'm hearing you correctly, we're a little higher than average in terms of our pay.
I think it depends on who you would ask. I predict that you, you would say something different.
Well, that's our goal.
I think we try to be fair. I think that's something.
So, we're fair with our pay, at least that's our goal. It's a nice town, we hear from people, you know, I'm biased, but... So, what is it? Like, how do we wrap our arms around why people don't stay here?
So, in talking with my other fire chiefs in the area, and I'm also on some state boards with the fire chiefs, this is not uncommon to us. People move, they go to other places. We're not, people can't, they don't live here. That's one of my issues that I have. So, they'll live in Weymouth and Boston, and they'll take the Boston test, and then if they're a veteran, and they come up on the Boston list, they can jump. Or if they're in Weymouth, and they take the civil service test, and they're a resident, and they go to the top of the list, they might not have been eligible for it, or they were in that in-between. There's so many ways that they can move. When I came on the job years ago, nobody moved anyway. You got a job in the municipality you were in, and that's where you stayed. That is not the way it is anymore today. They jump for a lot of reasons, and it's one of the risks that you take when you hire young folks.
Yeah, it's so expensive in the beginning.
Yeah, and it's, you know, there's step-one pay. I mean, it's not, step-one with a associate's degree is $68,000. So, with a master's degree, it's 72, and that's for step-one. So, and then they, there's six steps that they progress through. Some of them make it to the six steps, but a lot of, when they leave, a lot of them leave in that one-to-five-year range.
But we're paying for the academy.
Yes, we are.
It's expensive in the beginning, so...
Yeah, it's $15,000 to outfit a firefighter, just to go to the academy.
So, I have one other question, and I think this is a Jim thing, but if I look at the budget, when I look at overtime, it just looks like maybe things are in different budgets going forward.
So, it is, and I actually, and chief made that note. I remember this from last year, so if you look at overtime training, you want, I believe, chief, tell me if I'm wrong here.
Yeah.
You separated that out to better track the training costs of...
Correct. Yeah, we also had that money that he put in there for me, to bring in an outside consultant to do training for us. I've held on to that and have not used that to this point, because I know the situation that I'm in with filling the groups at nine for nine right now. So, until I'm comfortable, I'm not, I won't use that. I'm holding on to it. I'll use it, but I'm holding on to it right now, so. And this is not uncommon. I mean, I, that's, I'm very good at managing my budget, so I make sure that I get to where I have to get.
I have just one last thing. I hope you hear this, but the neighbors behind me and the neighbors next to me, with young children, both had a reason to call your area people, and they could not say enough good things about the response and compassion at really very scary times for both of them, both with good outcomes, but congratulations on that.
Thank you.
You really show up.
We have very good people.
Select Board? Okay. Anyone else? Okay, so I think we're wrapped with Chief Bailey. Chief, thanks, it was really good.
Yeah, thank you.
And obviously, we've got some work to do here. We'll continue to support you in that effort, so look forward to, we're going to...
We appreciate it.
Thank you. So, that concludes our joint meeting. All right, the Select Board has some additional business to cover, so Denny, if you guys want to adjourn, feel free, or you can hang with us if you'd like.
Can I just say one or two things?
Sure.
So, the meeting on the 28th, we're going to cover, I plan on discussing OPEB with you folks, giving you an overview of where we're at, what our unfunded liability is currently. The Select Board is set to hear a presentation from our actuarial auditor tomorrow evening at about 7:30. If you want to tune into it, great. I'll make sure the presentation, the presentation's going to be on YouTube on Walco Media Corp's channel, but I'll also make sure I get you a copy of the PowerPoint presentation that he provides. It's increased significantly, as you might think with everything that's gone up. I'm assuming the boards, once you get together, you may say, "Well, we may want to change the guidelines that were established in 2018," which, as part of the agenda, we are putting votes in court. So, if you want to adjust some of that, that's what the purpose of that meeting is. I want some feedback from you folks, in regards to OPEB. I'm also going to give a quick overview, here's where we stand with local receipts, here's what we collected historically, run through everything, I'll put everything in the forum, you'll receive beforehand, so you can kind of follow along. And then I expect to go over the debt budget with you folks, to show you what's kind of on the horizon. And a note I just made to myself is, we need to put about $20 million in FY31 for, as a placeholder for a fire station, if we try to pursue that. Jody and I are trying to make this not just a tool for the next one or two years, but a tool for the next five to seven years, that we can use for planning, for the pools, for whatever else may come up, school infrastructure needs. So, we'll run you through that whole of the debt spreadsheet as it stands today, but that sheet always changes over time. And then, lastly, I'm sure you'll hear from the schools, an update on where they stand, how's everything going with them, Superintendent Goff, and obviously, the school committee's going to be there, so. I think it'll be a good meeting. We'll have it over at the Council on Aging, a little bigger area, but we'll sit like this around the table, so, that's it.
Thanks, Jim. Thanks, everyone.
Actually, I just want to say, first of all, thank you to the Select Board for agreeing to do this. Thank you to fire, DPW, and police. I hope this is helpful. I felt like the conversation we had today was the conversation we've always had in the spring, when we're also then looking at the budget, and it's too late to have any input or say, and we always say, "Let's do this next year," and then we, I feel like we had the same conversation, so I'm glad we got this done early. Hopefully, this also saves you time next spring, you don't have to do the same presentations again, since we've already heard it. So, this was helpful. Jim, thank you for putting it all together. Since I was late, did we?
We did a motion.
That's what I just wanted to make sure. Do I have a second? Joseph? All in favor?
Aye.
Finance Committee, he's adjourned. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Appreciate it. Thank you, everybody. Good to be here.
Thank you.
Tell it to him.
They would agree with me.
At our last meeting, we had a discussion with several candidates for the tenant member on the Housing Authority, and there were three candidates that we interviewed. However, the Housing Authority themselves had not had a chance to interview the candidates and wanted to do so. We put it on the agenda today because we're a little bit of a time crunch. We have 30 days from, well, 30 days ago, because today is the 30 days, to get this appointment done. I know the Housing Authority met today and met with the various candidates. Jim, do we have a recommendation from the Housing Authority?
It's for Brian, and then actually, see if I remember his name.
Brian LaBelle?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So, that's the recommendation coming to us from the Housing Authority, which we were waiting on and felt important that we have that information. So, we did interview the candidates last week. Does anybody have any comment that they would like to make before we entertain a motion?
I'm excited that the Planning Board, I mean, the Housing Authority, had the recommendation of Brian LaBelle, I think, bringing someone who is a full-time military user. It'd be very beneficial to that board, as a parent of a full-time military user, I think. You never know what that life is and how we can improve it in town to offer more accessibility for Housing Authority, to have that person there to kind of offer their opinion and work with them. I think it's great.
Yeah, you know, I had the same thought last, when we were meeting with them previously, that that experience is a very important experience to bring to the Walco Housing Authority, and certainly, that's the whole point of the tenant member, is to bring the experience of the tenants to the discussion, so I thought that was good. So, Ally, could we have a motion for Brian LaBelle, please?
Motion to appoint Brian LaBelle to the Walco Housing Authority to fill a vacancy until, say, 7/2025.
Seconded. Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Four, zero, zero. And that concludes our unfinished business for the day, so, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, four, zero, zero. We are now adjourned.